Next item on the agenda is for information. Policies for first reading, policy sixty-one twenty-one, employment of administrators and supervisory personnel. Policy sixty-two thirty-two, staff development opportunities. Policy sixty-two thirty-four, license renewal. Policy sixty-three fifty, evaluation of classified employees. Policy sixty-four twelve, extracurricular and non-instructional duty assignments. Policy sixty-four thirty-three, safety belt used by employees. Policy sixty-four forty-five, prohibition against discrimination, harassment and bullying by officials, employees, volunteers, and visitors. And policy eighty-one thirty, school placement as employee benefits and revision to the Code of Ethics. And policy thirty-six ten, purchasing administration. And I think, Ms. Nichols, you have requested that we...
Yes.
What is it, it's on eighty-one thirty?
Well, wait till we go through it and then we'll, because it's gonna be a little confusing here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Nichols?
Okay, so listen carefully. The first policy that we had today at our policy committee meeting was presented by Mrs... Oh, gotta go back to it, okay. Mrs. Small. And it's one that has to be approved tonight in order for it to be effective by July first. So I'm gonna ask her if she'll explain the changes that we have, and then we can vote on it.
Thank you.
I didn't say anything about that. Thirty-six ten?
Thirty-six ten, yes.
Okay, you didn't say anything about us voting on it, but go ahead. Make a motion.
Okay, please. Thank you for this opportunity. This policy for purchasing administration needs to be changed because of new federal guidelines. It's called Uniform Guidance, and it's changed the procurement standards and processes that we need to follow for federal. And we found out recently that we actually, we knew about the new standards coming, but we didn't realize the policy change was needed effective July first. And so we're asking that you include the language that's highlighted there in terms of, you know, all contracts funded with federal grant or loan funds be procured in a manner that conforms to these new standards. The detailed standards will be included in our purchasing manual, which will be updated and linked to the policy. And we also have a couple of references down in the detail of the policy that just as reminders for each type of purchase, whether it's goods, construction repair, or services, that, you know, the federal rules need to be complied with.
So I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, that we waive first reading and approve this policy for tonight, at tonight's meeting.
Do you want to do it individually? I also know eighty-one...
On this particular one?
I noticed eighty-one thirty was also included.
Well, let's wait till we get to that one, so we're...
You want to do each one individually?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Sorry?
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Is it just that wording on the front that it has to comply, or is there some meat to it that...
We had a recommendation from the UNC School of Government that this particular language would meet the requirement under the law. We could also put the detailed procedures in the policy, but they're multiple pages. So we decided to go with this, on the advice of Mr. Bullard, to just go with this language and then have the details and the procedures.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. First off, we'll vote to waive first reading. Do I hear a motion, I have a motion to waive first reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we have waived first reading now. This is the vote on the motion itself to adopt this policy. Do I hear a motion to adopt this policy?
I move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is approved.
In the six thousand series, as you know, we're constantly revising and working on our policy manual. And the policy committee met for a long period of time. And we have these and the six thousand series to present to you for first reading tonight without any wave. So, Dr. Wellmers, if you will, share the changes, please.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Do you want me to go through these? Are we gonna do them individually, or just go through the whole?
Well, I have not had a chance to look at them in detail, so you might want to point out the reasons for your changes.
In policy sixty-one twenty-one, which is employment of administrators and supervisory personnel, the main change is on the first page. Applicants were previously required to send in a letter of reference by the policy, several other things, and what we did was we changed that to complete an online application. All our applications are now online. And additional documents are as requested because the advertisement online will indicate the documents needed for that particular position. So that is the major change in this, in this policy. Policy sixty-two ten is assignment and transfer of staff. Under this policy, we did change, we had where the person needs to complete the district's online transfer process. If, the main change here is that we now have what's called targeted schools. Targeted schools are identified schools where the employees, the teachers and the employees in the school have a supplemental amount of money added for working in that school. If we transfer an individual out of a targeted school to a non-targeted school, they won't, they don't retain that money. They won't keep that money in the transfer. So that's basically what this is saying. They're no longer eligible to receive that. And if, you'll notice, that's on the first page. On the second page, it states the same thing of employees involuntarily transferred. That's because employees can be transferred either voluntarily, which is done by the superintendent or designee, or involuntarily, which is done through our process and at their request. Either way, the, the transfer occurs out of a targeted school, they don't continue to get targeted money. Obviously, the targeted money is, is aimed to, for retention and for recruitment of, of teachers into that school. That's the main of that policy. Policy sixty-two thirty-two is, we've changed from staff development opportunities to professional development opportunities. The main things here is that we have, on number three on the first, or the second paragraph, we no longer give credit on salary schedule for additional educational training as approved. So that, that's the major change in this policy. And we do have a goodwill, a shell in there for a will, so. Policy sixty-two thirty-four is on license renewal. We made a change here where we're, the main thing is the state has moved what, from what's called an individual growth plan to a professional development plan. So we're just changing the title of that, that plan to meet what the state requires. On sixty-three fifty, which is evaluation of classified employees, on the first or third paragraph, we removed that classified employees who've been employed for less than two years in their current position shall also receive a mid-year evaluation. We don't do mid-year evaluations anymore. What we try to do is evaluate throughout the year and then do a summative at the end. So on that one, and on the second, or the next bullet down, employees whose performance rate is margin below standard should have mid-year performance. Once again, we don't do mid-year performance evaluations. It's an all-year evaluation. And we added a, the human resources webpage on that, and that's the major changes under sixty-three fifty. On sixty-four twelve, which is extracurricular and non-instructional duty assignments, this one is a state change also. You may remember, I don't know, maybe it was twelve, thirteen years ago, the state wrote into law that teachers in their first three years of coming to work for a school system, or at their twenty-seventh year and beyond, should not be assigned extracurricular duties after school, before school. They also talked about coaching. They didn't want those folks to be coaching or have to coach once they reach that, that margin. But still in there concerning the one to three-year teacher, but they removed the twenty-seven-year teacher requirements. So what we did in the policy is we went in and we basically took out the line that says teachers with at least twenty-seven years of experience don't have to do extracurricular duty. Yes, they do now under the state guidelines. So the state removed the twenty-seven-year cap. We'll work with the, the, non-experienced teachers, but if you're experienced now, you, you still have to go do bus duty.
But that's at the discretion of the principal?
Right, it still is at the discretion of the principal. Yeah, and they can, they can certainly do this any way they wish. And in sixty-four thirty-three, which is safety belt used by employees, the law also changed there, and it's not just a requirement of the drivers and front seat passengers, but we've now decided to belt every passenger. So we're, we're gonna make it safe for everybody in the car. So we added all passengers must now wear a safety belt. And another good shell in there, Ms. Nichols. Under prohibition against discrimination, harassment, bullying by officials, employees, volunteers, and visitors, policy sixty-four forty-five, the main change, which is, I don't know, back there a little bit. Oh, no, the whole change is the board. That's right. We changed the, in the first paragraph, to the board. I don't think we made a significant change anywhere else in the policy. And that's all of them. Is there one? Oh, that one was tabled, and that's why it's not the same. It's typically just five, that one's taped.
Which one?
The sixty-four forty-five prohibition against discrimination, harassment, bullying by officials.
Yes, we would not have brought just the change of the board, because we can do that.
I didn't think that was, yeah. I kept looking at that, wondered that seemed, but we, okay, well, we'll table that one. We'll recommend that.
All right, this is on for information, right?
Yes, for information. And if, do we have any questions on any of those?
Yes, I got a, I got a, I got at least one question. I didn't get a chance to read it as it went through. On the seat belts. All right. Since I hadn't had a chance to read it, I'm gonna just ask the question. If I'm an employee and I'm out driving my own car, does this apply?
No, no.
Okay, it's only if you're in a...
A school vehicle or doing schoolwork. So if you were, where you're kind of going with that, I think, and very rightly, is if you're an itinerant teacher and you're traveling between two schools, you're considered during your job hours, you should be wearing a seatbelt.
Kind of like Walkman's car.
Right.
All right. Now, I assume then we have seat belts in all our maintenance vans and all that, all, all those things?
Yes, sir, we do.
Do bus drivers have seat belts?
Yep, they do.
Okay.
But it would apply to your own vehicle if you're on campus?
Well, I mean, if you're driving off campus and you're leaving work, I don't think so. Mr. Bullard, that wouldn't constitute work, would it?
No, you're not considered at work if you are in your car, leaving your work site. Just like you're not considered at work until you get out of your car. You're not at work when you're driving into the parking lot in the morning. You're not at work till you get out of your car.
But we require our students to have them.
On campus.
If they're on campus. So why would our employees not be required on campus?
I think there's a state law that requires the students to...
But can we not?
Yeah, you could make a require, that same requirement for employees if you wanted to, but I don't think there's a legal requirement that you make...
But I think you ought to be, we ought to be consistent.
And we need to be consistent, because students say...
Well, in the opening paragraph, it talks. There is a requirement of the board that employees and other persons who operate a vehicle on campus abide by the state laws and regulations while operating or riding in a vehicle.
There is a state law that requires you to wear a seatbelt when you drive a vehicle.
Exactly.
So I, I would imagine that is kind of the one that we're talking about here. Is you still have to have a seatbelt on, or you're just thinking of just driving.
Yeah, but we're talking about, we're talking about us disciplining somebody, not the state of North Carolina. I mean, we don't have a state patrolman pulling them over to give them a twenty-five...
What are the consequences if you don't?
What?
What are the consequences if you don't wear it?
What is it, $250 fine?
No, not from the government, from us.
Oh, from us right now? That's what the discussion's about. Do we want to make a, we have a consequence for a student, and I think, I can't tell you what is off the top of my head, but we have consequences for students who do not use their seatbelt.
So what would we make the consequences for an adult?
One of our employees?
Mm-hmm, okay, well, he said, like, an itinerant going from school to school would, would absolutely be required. So if I was an itinerant teacher going from Johnson to College Park and I didn't wear my seatbelt, and it was found that I didn't wear my seatbelt, what would be the consequences?
Whatever this, this policy reads.
The, the policy states the consequences as you move through not wearing your belt. So it, it actually has first time, second violation, third violation, fourth violation, what, what's to occur.
So what we're talking about is what happens if you are a teacher at, at, at Hogard and...
You're in Hogard parking lot, and you don't have...
You pull into Hogard's property...
Right.
And you don't have your seatbelt fastened.
So what would be the consequences?
Well, apparently, at this point in time, we're not sure. Unless we make it part of the policy.
Well, I mean, it is part of the policy. You have to have your seatbelt. It says the state of North Carolina requires seatbelts to be used by drivers in front seat, or all passengers, in most types of motor vehicles. Now, I don't know what another motor vehicle without one would be, but, and to reinforce and complement this requirement.
But it's, I understand that. But that's, the state of North Carolina does it as a criminal, or if you will, a, a motor vehicle. But we're not gonna station a deputy sheriff at the entrance to Hogard, or Laney, or Ashley, to check and make sure you got your seatbelt on, because what the question becomes is a policy of this school district saying that if you come on our campus without a seatbelt and you're an employee of ours, are we going to have ramifications for that or not?
Well, I, I think the policy states that, that you are. And so if, if a seatbelt policeman on campus turns someone in for not having it, then you, there would be a consequence.
Number one.
Well, I, I, okay, you've got, you know, first time an employee or driver is observed driving, okay. Like I said, we hadn't had a chance to read this. So first time an employee, driver, or passenger is observed driving on campus unrestrained or unstrained passenger, he or she receives a verbal warning. Second time, okay, then, okay, question's answered. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
See, we're paying attention, I'm impressed. This is good. So if you have any additional questions or suggestions...
I do have one more question.
Okay.
Go back to the very first one. About applications for... No, that's not the first one, is it?
The first one was sixty-one twenty-one.
Yeah, okay, all right, wait a minute. Then apparently go down some.
Which one do you want? The...
Okay, here we go, here we go, here we go. Here's what I, all right. Traditionally, we have said that if you apply for a job with us, we require you have a letter of intent, a brief resume, transcript, and a minimum of three references, right?
Right.
So is this doing away with that unless the job description itself specifically says that?
Not the job description. The way that we advertise now is through a program that puts this electronically out to companies that, that try to recruit folks. I mean, it goes to a lot of people, and to the state, and through the state to everybody, so that when they look up New Hanover County Schools or the state of North Carolina, they can see. And we can list on there what we're requiring for this job. And so I think in most cases, we would require those things, but there's a possibility we wouldn't, I guess, but most of the time, we would. But you list, that's where it's gonna be listed. The applicant's gonna see that as part of the, what, to, to app, to apply for this job, this is what you've got to do.
All right, so let's say hypothetically, I'm, I'm applying for a job, and I saw a job. When I opened that job, it would tell me right there what I have to do.
That's right. Please send a, a letter of reference, or please send a letter of interest, or a short resume to, da-da-da-da-da.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that.
It's the new age and the way we get information out to people now, and that's kind of how they send it back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So again, if you have additional questions or suggestions, if you will, contact Dr. Wellmers' office. The last series is the eight thousand series. And again, we're asking for your consideration tonight to waive the first reading and to approve this policy. And I asked Dr. Holliday to explain it and why.
Thank you, ma'am. Ooh, wow.
Turn the volume down.
I like the sound.
I don't, I don't have a whole lot of choice here. It's just kind of like the voice coming out here. Two things we're asking for to, to, for you to do tonight, mainly because we need to have this done before school starts. And the first one is the school placement as employee benefit. We had to change a couple of schools. Gregory is a application-only school, and it can't be a employee benefit school. So we're asking that the Gregory Employee Benefit School be Forest Hills. Now, I understand we give, we give credence to employees who want to send their children there, but they have to have a district school, because it, just like all the other schools, have to have a district school. And the same for Williston. Their Employee Benefit Elementary School would now change to Forest Hills. And as you remember, how we do the employee benefit schools, those are the schools closest to the school where the parent is working. So that needs to happen. And also, Virgo needs to come off the table completely, because it is no longer our school, and they are no longer our employees.
Why are we changing Gregory?
Ma'am?
Why are we changing Gregory?
Gregory is a, an application-only school, so they have to have an employee benefit district school for those children to go to. Now, I will say that, as you know, if the parent wants the child to go there, we, we will give special dispensation for that. But again, it can't be an employee benefit school, because it's an application-only school, just like Eaton and Cottington and those schools like that. But that's it, Madam Chair, for that one. The other one is not the policy, but it is the companion to the policy for extracurricular and co-curricular programs eligibility. The attachment to that policy is the Code of Ethics. And the Code of Ethics, as you know, we passed several years ago. We were really one of the first school districts to do this, based on your leadership and asking us to do this and getting out in front of it. And we needed to make some changes. Our athletic directors spent some time on this this year, looking at some of the nuances of this policy and, and shoring it up a little bit. And we would like to have these changes in effect for the next school year. So you graciously allowed us to bring this. And some of these things were just cleaning up the language and also inserting some of the things that have happened since the policy, like, to give you an example. In the, in the final bullet, under general rules, on the first page, we had to insert e-cigarettes, because that was not a problem in the, in the old, when the original policy was put on the table. So we had to make sure that that was in there, because right now, we still have some people thinking that e-cigarettes are okay. It's, the same law covers that as covers a regular cigarette, so we wanted to make sure that that was included. Also, some language in there, that, that inserted in there about sexual harassment. And when we got to the offenses, some of the things that may disqualify you from participation in extracurricular activities or athletics is something that you might not necessarily get suspended for. Well, under the first offense policy, it says resulting in an in- or out, out-of-school suspension. Something may not result in an in- or out-of-school suspension, something that you may have done on the weekend that, that may impact your ability to participate. We wanted to be able to give our schools the ability to discipline students in extracurricular activities, even if it might not result in an out-of-school suspension, or even an in-school suspension. Same with second offense, and the third offenses that goes on, and, and then some, some language cleanup there. But again, and also, the one thing that it does is it resets at the end of every year. So it gives a student a chance, when they come back the next year, to participate. If they're otherwise eligible, this resets and starts the first offense, second offense, third offense on the next year. So it, it basically makes it a little, a bit fairer to the student as well. Though, that just cleans it up a little bit.
All right, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you not just put comma, electronic cigarettes, instead of putting in a parentheses after tobacco?
We can do that, sir.
I, I think it would be, I mean, if, if somebody came in, they might argue tobacco, you said including electronic cigarettes, but it would just seem clearer to say drugs, tobacco, comma, electronic cigarettes, comma, and alcohol.
We'll do that, that's not a problem. But again, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board, we are asking that these two things be waived for first reading, and you let us go ahead and implement them.
I need a motion to waive first reading.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, now I need a motion to adopt eighty-one thirty as, I guess, amended to make comma, electronic cigarettes.
Excuse me, can you go down a little bit? I think it needs to be clarified, it, under drugs, tobacco, including electronic cigarettes. On the third line, it says, "Students is not acceptable and prohibited." Shouldn't it say is not acceptable and is prohibited? Couldn't it be halfway interpreted that it is prohib, is not prohibited?
We'll clean that up.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, we'll clean it up.
All right.
Yes, that would help, thank you.
We'll, we'll clean that up. Thanks for catching.
I need a, I need a motion to adopt policy eighty-one thirty as amended by the administration.
So move.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. No, I don't need a vote, I'm...
Yeah, we do.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Dr. Holliday, I'd like for you to share the forms that the students are going to be, well, they've been signing, but more accountability.
Yes, ma'am. The forms that we're, we're using as a part of this are now color-coded, so that they stand out, and that the athlete and the, and the parent signs the form, and it holds everybody accountable that you... We present this at our parent meetings and when our athletes come together, and also bands and choruses, when they have the parent meetings, and this form is signed. And if there's a question about, well, I didn't know, well, here it is. Signed, sealed, and delivered. And again, the form stands out because it's gonna be color-coded. And that was your idea, so we appreciate that.
And also, for the board, we, we've included not just their name, but certainly the name of the school, but their address, in case they don't remember exactly where they live and we find that they're out of district. The parents have given the same address or a different address.
You'd be amazed at the amount of times that we get, we, we have multiple addresses, and, and, yeah, we, we keep, we keep our department busy chasing those down.
Thank you.
So on the second form, though, you need a, another period there after Code of Ethics, the first one.
We'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Summer food service program, appendix G. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Every summer, our Child Nutrition Department provides meals, breakfast and lunch, to kids and young adults eighteen years of age and, and younger. Last year, we served over thirty-seven thousand meals at twenty-six sites. Child Nutrition was actually recognized for this effort. They won the Bronze Level Award from the USDA, and they won the Turn Up The Beat Award from NCDPI. So tonight, Imar Smith, the Director of Child Nutrition, is here and is gonna tell you about our program... So tonight, Imar Smith, the Director of Child Nutrition, is here and is gonna tell you about our program for this summer.
I want to bring it up so it can be, the whole poster can be seen and not blocked by the. Put it out here. I mean, you know, at an angle or something like, yeah.
This is a wonderful poster that all the schools received. And they didn't receive this banner, but this is some of the efforts that No Kid Hungry has put together for a lot of the several sponsors that do sponsor the Summer Food Service Program. So because we were honored with some awards through the state and through the national USDA recognition, we were awarded this display here. So I was happy to get this. And I do have this out at the Spencer Building, Main Office. And I did give all the schools a poster size of this replica right here. And also I have it at the Board of Ed-, the Main Administration Office. So it is a very handy.
Somebody presented this to us?
Well, on behalf of Turn Up The Beat Award and some other awards, that the other state award that we won through Summer Food Service, we were presented this at one of our state meetings. Yes, ma'am. Yes. So anyway, I do have this up at the Spencer Main Administration Office. And it is kind of nice and colorful and it gives the parents a lot of information. Quick references, which I'll go over about how to find out where the sites are here in New Hanover County. But I'm gonna start off. I just wanna say thank you first for sponsoring, letting Child Nutrition sponsor this Summer Food Service Program. It is a program that I have to apply for. And with your approval, not approval, but with your generosity to allow me to do this, I'm able to take this program and work through other cities. I mean, I've worked with churches, community partnerships. So I've been able to build this rapport with other community leaders and then get New Hanover County schools, you know, in the community. But I just wanted to start off. I am Imar Smith, the Director for Child Nutrition. And on the next slide, there is a visual of what happened in two thousand seventeen. And as you notice, we're in the purple area for New Hanover County and we're feeding about sixteen to twenty percent. There are fifteen counties that are in this amount that they're looking at participation for the summer nutrition program. So I'm happy to say that and proud to say that we're doing a fantastic job. Oh, do I do this? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. I thought somebody, I thought somebody just did it for me. Thank you. All right, here we go. So what is a Summer Food Service Program? It is a USDA program that I apply for. And it does provide kids and teens in low-income areas free meals when school is out. It is a federally funded program, so there is no cost to any of the children that are eighteen years old or younger. There is a waiver that does allow those with special needs to be up to the age of twenty-one, so that is great. The adults, if they do come with parents, guardians, we do have a low cost for those if they would like to participate in our program and purchase a meal. But it is a fabulous program because we do get to reach out to children. You know, some of our upcoming Head Start children that are coming into the program and to New Hanover County schools, they're able to see what our food is about and what it tastes like. We do try to highlight some of the favorites of the children. So it is a very good program that we try to reach a lot of the children in the community. If you look at the next slide, oh, here I go. Here I go. I'm sorry. In two thousand seventeen, we are ranked twenty-one out of ninety-nine counties participating. And so we are meeting about fifteen point six one percent of the needs met. And just in summary, like Mr. Anderson stated, in two thousand seventeen, we had twenty-six sites. We served over thirty-seven thousand three hundred meals. We averaged a little over a thousand a day and thirty-four days of service. So this summer, here we go, USDA always gives us something to work towards. We still have twenty-six sites, but we are extending the number of days to thirty-eight days. So we're working very hard to, I don't really want any hiccups in the summer because we know that if we're not feeding them, that these children are going hungry. And so we wanna try to eliminate as best as we can to make that gap a little bit tight, you know, shorter. And, you know, and right now, school's letting out, but we are, we have been gearing up for the Summer Food Service Program this, you know, for right now. We do have, like I said, twenty-six sites. And this is on our website and I have sent it out to all the principals to send it out to their parents. And I did appear on the forum to go over the sites of the Summer Food Service. But we have, as you can tell, we have several participating schools. We have Alderman, Castle Hain, Wrightsboro, Williston, Forest Hills, Winter Park, Bradley Creek, Mary C. Williams, College Road, Early Childhood Center, Douglas Academy, Vestav Village, Martin Luther King Center, Lighthouse Shining Ministries, Houston Moore, Hillcrest, Village at Greenfield, Mates Park, Creekwood South, Union Missionary Church, Rankin Terrace, Warren Temple Church, St. Phillips, AME Zion Church, Creating Opportunities for Youth, Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church, Royal Palms Mobile Home Park, and Warriors of Christ. So I just wanted to say that publicly about all the sites. Yes, ma'am.
Where are we doing it, at Royal Palms? What kind of facilities do they have there?
They have a community picnic area next to the pool. And so we are able to, and it's a shelter, it's a covered sheltered area. So we're able to have bag meal, bag lunches, picnic-style lunches available for the children. And they come during that period of time. I only have a thirty-minute time limit just because I don't, you know, sometimes, the summer is hot here. So we do have a way that the federal government does, if it's over an excessive amount of heat and they've warned it as being a very hot day, then I can allow the children to take the meals and take them home with them. Otherwise, they need to, they have to sit under the shelter and eat their meals. But there is a picnic area available and they have a wonderful facility out there. All right, here we go. Three ways to find the meal sites. And on this poster here, it does say that there are three ways. You can either text FOODNC to eight seven seven eight seven seven. You can call the one eight six six three hungry, or you can visit the No Kid Hungry site. And I did wanna end on this last note, that there is a Canadian educator that once said, "Care more than others think is wise, risk more than others think is safe, dream more than others think is practical, expect more than others think is possible." We will care, we will risk, we will dream and expect more than others think is possible when serving our children through the Summer Food Service Program. So if they, anybody wants to know anything more about our information, we have it on our website. Any questions?
There were two, I think, on Carolina Beach Road. Do you still have to go by the percentages at a school before you can set up a feeding site in that area? You've gotta have a certain percentage. Say like Carolina Beach Elementary School, we don't have anything that far south.
We did. A couple of years, we had a church on Carolina Beach that did participate. Participation was low, so we were not on Carolina Beach, but close to Carolina Beach. We were able to get Lighthouse Ministries, which is nearby. And they have a program that they're gonna be operating this summer with children. So we're hoping that maybe the church that we did have on Carolina Beach will maybe have, you know, maybe next summer drum up some business and we will have more participation in that area. They do, they not only go by student demographics, but there is a demographic tool that we can use that through USDA that can tell us the area. And we can look at the area and see if it does meet the poverty levels that are required by this program. So it's not only solely just on school data, but it's on the area. So there is, we do plug in the addresses to see if a site will qualify for meals at no cost. Any other questions?
Thank you, Imar.
Thank you so much. I can't wait to report our new, our numbers for next summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, administrative personnel, personnel recommendations, appendix H. Dr. Holliday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I have Dr. Wellmers, who is going to present those to you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. As the board's aware, Dr. Susan Hahn in the HR Division, who is Director of HR, will be retiring as of August first. So we've been looking for someone to replace Dr. Hahn. And we would like to recommend Ms. Robin Myers. Ms. Myers is currently the Certified Talent Supervisor in the Human Resources Division. She previously served as a principal at Myrtle Grove Middle School and assistant principal and assistant principal at DC Virgo Middle School. For her service with us, she served as an assistant principal and an English teacher with Camden County Schools in Georgia. She received a bachelor's degree in secondary education English from the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga and a master's degree in educational administration and supervision from Valdosta State. And it's my pleasure to recommend Ms. Myers to you.
Move for approval.
Valdosta State?
I second the message.
I don't hear that that often, huh? That's my country down there. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You are approved. All right, next.
We have a recommendation, as you're also aware, the importance that technology and the innovation of technology is as it is in the school system and what it does for our students. And what we'd like to do is recommend that Ms. Dawn Brinson be moved from the chief position to a contracted position of Assistant Superintendent and still represent us, of course, in technology and all the rights that go along with that position. So we would like to recommend the contract employment of Ms. Dawn Brinson.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. You can stand up, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does this mean you no longer help me with my phone? Thank you. I'm coming to see you next week.
Does the Deputy Superintendent have a report?
Yes, sir, but I don't think you want to hear it. No. No, I'm fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, consensus items. Personnel, appendix I. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommend the policy recommendations included in the board package be approved.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, budget amendments, appendix J. Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I recommend that the budget amendments be approved as presented. I did fail to include the dollar amount of the capital outlay transfer. It's included on the detail sheet, but it's eight hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
Just eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, Saul. Move for approval.
Have a motion. I hear a second. Second. I have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item C, change of school assignments, appendix K. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, ask that you grant these releases to the neighboring counties of employees of those school districts who would like to have their children attend with them.
Hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda is old business, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, curriculum course guide revisions, appendix L. Dr. Smith.
Yes, good evening. We are recommending the addition of the American Humanities Seminar to the current curriculum course guide. This is a state-approved course. We also have with us this evening the instructor for the course and also Mr. Cummings, Assistant Principal at New Hanover High School, if there are any questions.
Move for approval.
Do I have a second? Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
What level course?
This is on level, but there is also the possibility that it would be made to be available as an honors course at a later date. But we are looking at on level.
So what do you anticipate in terms of the student level and in terms of like freshman, sophomore, junior, senior?
I'll ask the classroom teacher if she would not mind coming forward.
Are these future students with the class?
He did just win Future Teacher Award. It'll be, it's intended for freshmen, at least at this point.
So this will replace one of the other, the history classes?
No, this would be a social studies elective. And our intent at this point would be for it to be an optional prerequisite for a student who may need some added support, reading, critical thinking, historical thinking skills. And then second semester, move into Hanover's freshman course of civics.
It looks to be a very diverse course from politics to art to music to... I guess I just wonder, and it talks about historical incorporation. I'm just interested how all that's going, how you're gonna be able to incorporate all of that.
Well, we're hoping to use it to reinforce those themes, particularly thinking in terms of civics. So it had, has ideas of American identity, I think are the ones I've particularly included. And then ideas like the American Dream and then American culture balancing rights with the common good. And those are all things that have a real natural alignment with our civics course, particularly your Founding Principles Act. And so our intent is to use current events, art, literature, poetry, those things that are part of the humanities course to give students a chance to really dig a little deeper into those ideas that we think about with civics, economics, personal finance.
But this is a seminar course as opposed to a lecture or...
Yes, it is a seminar course. And we're hoping with the flexibility of an elective to be able to implement guest speakers and local field trips to see government in action, to see business in action and things like that. Yes, it's intended as a seminar.
And especially to develop critical thinking skills amongst the students.
Yes, critical reading, critical thinking, those skills. Yes, sir.
So are you able to, in order to kind of be able to access or let the students know who might benefit from this course, are you able to get into the middle schools that, you know, to tell these students that this course is available? Because they may not necessarily know.
Yes, ma'am.
What, you know, humanities course is all about.
Yes, we have gone, some of them we were able to go in person, some we've just made a contact with guidance counselors there. And we've given out, they helped us either identify or kids volunteered an interest form, actually hoping to pick them up at schools tomorrow. Hopefully, we have some of those. But yes, ma'am, we have done that in a variety of ways.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to approve the revision and addition of this seminar course.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, Gifted Advisory Council Annual Report, appendix M. Dr. Smith.
Yes, last month, we brought to you the Gifted Advisory Council Annual Report. But in my era, I do need your approval acknowledging the receipt of this report. So I'm asking for the board's approval of the GNC Annual Report.
Move for approval.
Have a motion. I hear a second. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those... Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Freeman Year-Round Pre-K Calendar, appendix N, Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you. Um, last month I brought to you the restart calendar for Freeman, and you approved that, and now we are aligning their pre-K calendar to that restart calendar. So we would ask the board's approval.
Move for approval?
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second. You say second? Second. Okay. Uh, alright. I think. Any questions or discussion about this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Next item under new business. Consideration of Memorandum of Understanding between Cape Fear Community College and New Hanover County School System, appendix O, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board ask that you approve our Memorandum of Understanding, uh, between, uh, Cape Fear Community College and, um, our system for the purposes of, um, our Wilmington Early College. This is a routine renewal of this agreement, and it's been a very successful program. Great school. Um, basically listed as one of the top high schools in the state, so ask that you please, uh, approve this, um, Memorandum of Understanding.
Move for approval? Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, Williston Drainage, uh, Williston Drainage Easement, appendix P, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting approval of a drainage easement within the Williston Gregory campus. Uh, the easement will directly benefit the schools by improving drainage, um, on the campus and alleviating the concern for flooding, uh, that's occurred in the past. Um, New Hanover County Schools is asked to provide the easement, and, uh, the city of Wilmington will actually pay for and oversee all of the, uh, construction improvements. Uh, tonight we're asking for your approval, uh, however, it is subject to receipt of the final survey, uh, in a condition acceptable to Mr. Bullard. We have attached a, uh, a draft or a sketch of the, uh, the easement, but the final survey has not been provided to us.
Move for approval?
Well, let's get down here and see what it was. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Would this be based upon Mr. Board's approval at the, yeah, I second.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And I would approve it if it's substantially consistent with what's shown on this diagram. If not, I would discuss it with the city or bring it back to you and make sure you're aware of any substantial changes.
Alright, just to be clear. Is it? Okay.
I can tell you in general, the, um, scroll down a little bit. The, um, the current, the current, um, the current system runs between the historic building, uh, now used by Gregory, and, um, and the new, or the two-story classroom building, which is part of Wilmington, or part of Williston. It then runs down behind, uh, the gymnasium, uh, to what used to be, um, Eleventh Street. Uh, from there it runs out to, uh, Ann Street. That system is gonna stay in place because that system actually serves, uh, our campus. We have roof leaders that are tied into it, and some catch basins, uh, throughout the, throughout the campus that are also tied into it. But the city's gonna take the stormwater from Tenth Street, and you can see with the dash line that, uh, runs north of Tenth Street. Um, that is the new line. It's gonna take all of that water from Tenth Street, run it up to, uh, almost to Ann Street, and the actual easement will be down the side yard, uh, adjacent to Ann Street, and it'll tie back into the existing system. In the past, the, uh, the amount of water, um, you know, just, it was too much for the old system to handle, and, um, I have personally been out there when I think you could have, uh, kayaked, uh, from Tenth Street down to what used to be, or what is now Gregory. Uh, that's how much water went through there. So, uh, the city's been looking at this for a while, and, um, you know, is confident that this will alleviate those problems, and, um, we're recommending that you approve the easement.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Change order to the, uh, CMAR Agreement for Roland Grice Middle School Renovations, appendix Q, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Um, the renovations at Roland Grice are included in the two thousand fourteen bond program. Uh, the board approved the Construction Management at Risk, or CMAR Agreement, with WM Jordan at the, uh, March two thousand eighteen meeting. Uh, since then, we've concluded, uh, bidding, and we asked the board to approve a deductive change order in the amount of one million five hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Uh, this change order will establish a guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, for the project, uh, which is seven million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand and fifty-five dollars, and authorize, uh, JM, or JW, WM Jordan, uh, to proceed with construction, uh, which will begin this summer. We're asking, uh, the board's approval of the change order tonight.
Move for approval?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm having a hard time understanding exactly what is happening here. It's going down? Well, it's, it's, I mean-
It is. When, um, when, when we enter a constru-, uh, Construction Management at Risk Agreement, uh, the agreement establishes a projected budget for construction.
Okay.
The actual budget is then brought to you once bids are received. So our bids are one point five million dollars under budget.
Okay, good.
And so we're, we're deducting that from their contract, uh, with this change order, which then establishes a, uh, a new guaranteed maximum price and authorizes the contractor to proceed with the work.
Okay, alright, so I mean, it, it's not gonna be a case where in the next, sometime in October, we're gonna be buried under with new change orders because somebody miscalculated?
Uh, no, sir, and actually, in, in the Construction Management at Risk contract, that is what the guaranteed maximum price is.
Okay, alright, I just want to be, I just want to be clear about that. Thank you.
Well, where does the million five hundred thousand go?
Right now it's going back into the budget, and, um, you know, then if it's not used during construction, or prior to, uh, prior to that, we're moving into our bond contingency. Uh, you'll recall, we just awarded design of the last three projects, and, um, you know, we, with the construction escalation cost, and we, uh, we do anticipate, uh, the need to build up our contingency.
But it's all part of the bond?
It's all part of the bond, yes, sir. I will say that, um, even though this is a deduct change order, the original scope was, uh, to renovate the two-story classroom building, and even with this change order, we were able to expand that scope to include the administration building. There's a small addition, uh, to that building and renovations of that building as well. So we're, we're actually able to do more than, um, we anticipated in the original scope of the bond.
Alright. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item D, disposal of surplus property, appendix R, Ms. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board's approval to dispose of surplus property which is no longer necessary or desirable for public school purposes. Um, in accordance with public school law, the, um, auction would be scheduled, um, to be held on the twenty-third.
Move for approval?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, year-end amendment resolution, Ms. Small.
Thank you. This, um, resolution would authorize me to approve budget amendments on June thirtieth, um, to balance budget actual expenditures for state position allocations and any non-allotted, um, line items. Um, basically any adjustments the state makes to the budget between now and year end. Um, and then to transfer any state and local funds as needed to maximize state funding.
Move for approval?
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second. I have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Next item, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, interim budget resolution, appendix T, Ms. Small.
Thank you. Um, as you're aware, the, um, county approved their budget yesterday. Um, the state approval is, is imminent, and, um, we anticipate bringing a budget to you at your July meeting for approval. But we'll have a few days in July for which we would not have a budget without this resolution, which just authorizes us to keep spending at the current level, within the current budget, for the first part of July.
Move for approval?
Have a motion. Need a second? Did I hear a second? Second. I'm sorry. Any questions or discussion? By the way, I want to thank y'all for going and representing us. I could not be there, but I know y'all did an outstanding job, because everything went well.
Thank you.
Alright.
We didn't vote.
Huh?
Did we vote?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Alright, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item. Enter my health, uh, Eastern North Carolina Incorporated, appendix U, Ms. Askew.
Uh, yes, this is our annual contract for, um, supporting our students with intensive medical needs. Uh, we have nine students that require one-on-one RN, uh, nursing services in order to be able to access their daily education in our schools, so this is our contract for that.
Move for approval?
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second. Have a second. Any questions or discussion?
Is this, um, something that needs, that we ever have to bid out, or is this something that we just, um, how, how do we arrive at this contract?
We did, um, a bidding process through our purchasing department. Um, in fact, we just, um, reviewed that, given, um, the policy discussion we had earlier about, um, procuring or purchasing services through, with federal dollars. Um, we did meet that standard. I did reach out to, um, DPI, um, specifically regarding the wording of, um, the new, um, purchasing, um, requirements, when we're looking at a quality indicator as opposed to just a price indicator. But we did follow our, um, per, our, um, RFP for bids, and we are on a three-year process, but we will send this back out to bid next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item H, Child Development Center Incorporated, appendix V, Ms. Askew.
Uh, yes, this is our annual contract for our developmental day services, um, for our preschool children who meet a certain criteria, uh, through state guidelines. These are state dollars that are provided to us from DPI on a slot basis. Uh, and this is, um, uh, the Child Development Center, and, um, Easter Seals UCP is our other contractor, but, um, we have far less slots in that location, so this is the one that requires your approval.
Move for approval?
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? I have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, renewal of general liability, automobile and workman's compensation insurance, appendix W, Mr. Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you can see, we, we are recommending renewal of your general liability, auto and workers' comp policies with Liberty Mutual this year. Uh, you've been with Liberty Mutual for auto for several years. If you will recall, last year we made a switch, uh, to Liberty for the other two major cor- coverages, which is general liability and workers' comp. We have been generally satisfied with Liberty Mutual services. Uh, the, our insurance agent did receive bids, and the Liberty bids, taken as a whole, were, uh, the best cost value for the school system. Um, they are savings by bundling the policies, uh, and so my recommendation is renewal of all three for the amounts stated.
Move for approval?
Have a motion? Second. Have a second? Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to clarify, I am recommending approval for the eighteen nineteen school year. I think, uh, there was a typo in one of the, uh, sheets. It was for seventeen eighteen, but this is beginning July first for the eighteen nineteen fiscal year.
It does say seventeen eighteen down here, remember? Thank you. Alright, um, any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
There, there was one caveat to the auto coverage, Mr. Chairman. Um, one of the provisions of the auto coverage, uh, that we have been purchasing is underinsured and uninsured motorist coverage, UM or UIM coverage. I have had discussions with our agent and with the superintendent and Mary Hazel about possibly deleting that portion of the coverage. That would save us about twenty thousand dollars of the amount that you just approved. So I am asking the board to authorize, uh, the superintendent with my approval to delete that coverage if he deems it, uh, in the best interest of the school system, after looking at the amount that could be saved. Because I'm not sure that portion of the coverage is even necessary.
So if, you, you're saying that we don't have people run into us who are either not insured or who are underinsured?
We do have that situation happen, but the-
I mean, it's not a significant amount.
Well, it, it doesn't happen very often, but, uh, we are looking at trying to ensure the negligence of your own drivers, and UM, UIM coverage essentially ensures the negligence of the third party. And so the way I'm looking at this is, it's not really the school system's responsibility to cover the negligence of a third party.
Yeah, but if they don't have insurance, how do we get our vehicles fixed?
Uh, we have property damage coverage.
That cover, uh, I mean, that-
That would cover our, what, what the scenario that you're talking about is if someone in our vehi- vehicle gets injured by the negligence of another driver, then my recommendation is that we not spend money purchasing insurance for that other driver. We should only be using the school system's dollars to purchase insurance to cover the negligence of our own employees, not someone else's negligence.
Well, I, I understand that. I, I, I understand that, but I'm trying to understand because personal drivers, or it's advocated that they have uninsured motorist insurance.
There is an option to purchase it, and every
It's advocated.
individual has the right to reject or accept that coverage.
I understand that, but I mean, it's highly advocated, because, I don't know if they still exist, but I mean, you got states like Florida that have, uh, no-fault insurance, and with the number of people from Florida and some of those other states that run through this state, I mean, maybe buses are not susceptible. I just, I mean, if it's a case where we don't have any claims or any significant claims, I understand, but if, if, if we're having, you know, significant claims, now thinking not so much the buses. The buses are so big that, you know, somebody runs into it, it's, it's gonna do more damage to them than it is us, but, you know, our maintenance vehicles and, uh, some of our, uh, you know, student-driving cars, or some of the other things like that. I mean, I, I just, I'm just questioning, for twenty thousand dollars, is it worth giving that up?
Well, what I would suggest is let me write a memo to the board explaining the various scenarios, and then we can have some further discussion on that. So you've approved it, including the UM, UIM coverage, so we won't delete that without further discussion with the board.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is correspondence. Anybody have any correspondence they're just dying to share with us? Yes, sir.
Yes, I do. Um, it's not really correspondence. I just wanted to make the board aware of a meeting that I had today with the principal over at, uh, Mr. Locklear over at JC Row, and Dr. Smith, we'll be hearing a lot more about this later, and also Dr. Holliday. Uh, but Mr. Locklear was there. Uh, Ms. Melissa Singler, she's the Executive Vice President at Cape Fear Community College.
Fear Community College, and Ray Shifaris, who is the Veterans Affairs Officer down at Cape Fear. And what's being contemplated and kicked around, and I'm real excited about it, is a program that we can take to J.C. Rowe next year. A mentoring-type program, but yet a program also, and I won't get into the details because I don't really know that much about it, other than what we discussed today, but a program they can take there where the long, the students that are long-term at J.C. Rowe could possibly be exposed to, you know, the courses offered at Cape Fear, such as their, we discussed today, the plumbing, what, the way that can come out. And actually, they offer a two-week program down there, it's 80 hours of instruction, where you can be certified. So, they're willing to work with us, and that, all this is, you know, contingent upon some things, but where they could bring that program to J.C. Rowe and with a mentoring program, because, you know, I've been working on an idea to get some mentors over there with some veterans groups that I'm involved with, and get these, a lot of these students involved in some things, and then also a way through Cape Fear, and they've been very supportive, where it could lead to some certifications and so forth through there, because they're willing to cut it like two days a week. They would bring the program there, like during a club time, something like that, where these students could take part. And I think it'd really be beneficial to our system and help a lot of these students. And it just, to me, it's a win-win for everyone. But all the days, it wouldn't start until about September. Just wanted to make you aware the meeting was today and that there's, you know, a lot of correspondence and some other meetings that'll take place. But I just really appreciate the willingness and the, how cooperative Cape Fear Community College is in working with us in the endeavors and what they're willing to do, which I think our students can greatly benefit from. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Don said instead of calling them the watchdogs, he's going to call them the old dogs.
No, that was Dr. Markley's recommendation, not my.
Okay, sorry. I described it to the wrong person.
Long and the tooth dog.
Okay.
It's not really correspondence, but I did have it laying here on my, at my place, and I guess I'm supposed to announce this. The Board of Education has an appointment annually to the Board of Trustees of Cape Fear Community College. We have four scattered out over four years. And we met on May the 30th and heard from several applicants, and in the end, it was the will of our board to appoint Mr. Robert Collins Jr. as our most recent appointee to the Board of Trustees of Cape Fear Community College. Any other correspondence? All right, announcements. Members of New Hanover County Board of Education will attend New Hanover County School Transition Program graduation ceremony, which will take place tomorrow, June 6th, at 11 o'clock a.m. in, here in the board's center. It's always an interesting program to come to. And what's always so amazing about this program is the number of jobs these students have and the local companies that provide these opportunities. It always interests me to hear that. Second, New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the Educator of the Year banquet tomorrow, June 6th, at 6:00, in the Cafeteria of Ashley High School. I hope everyone can be there. C, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley Performing Learning Center graduation ceremonies on Friday, June the 8th, at 7:00 in the auditorium of Snipes Academy of Arts and Design at 2150 Chestnut Street. Again, I think it's good if all the members are able to attend. It shows our support for the work these students have done. And then comes the big one. The New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the New Hanover County Schools Traditional High School graduation ceremonies, which will take place on Saturday, June the 9th, 2018, at Trask Coliseum on the campus of the University of North Carolina Wilmington. Laney High School will graduate at 8:30 a.m. or begin graduation at 8:30 a.m. Ashley will begin graduation at 12:30 p.m. Hoggett will begin graduation at 4:00, and New Hanover High School will begin graduation at 7:30. And again, I would encourage everybody who can to be there. I think in my 24 years of being on this board, I have never missed one of these graduations. The next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will take place on Tuesday, July 10th, 2018, at 5:30 here in this center. Lastly, we'll remind everyone that we have reassignment hearings, June the 26th and 27th, starting at 8:30 here in this building. And we need everybody to be here. So, having said all that, we no longer need a closed session, is that correct?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. We do need a closed session.
We do, okay.
Follow-up on the second item that you discussed previously.
Oh, okay, all right. Then, do I hear a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to what?
Going to be North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 143, dash 318, point 11A6 for Personnel.
Okay.
So, babe.
Second.
Have a motion, second? Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session.